I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. And welcome to uh basic key uh city people bay. Do you mind calling a roll please? Uh, can you name it? Councilor Beasley?
Can you hear us, Greg?
Here.
Okay.
I can, thank you.
Here. Councilor King, here. Councilor Rec, here. Mayor Short, here. Councilor Salgram, here. And Councilor Watson, here. Thank you. Okay, we have a quorum. All present, thank you. Okay, has everyone had a chance to review our? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Are there any changes in additions to the agenda? All right, now we'll go for it. You can send the agenda. Included some minutes, some accounts payable, our revenue expenditure, report on our business life and activity. I just wanted to note this evening that um part of our accounts payables did include the payment to copper, which is our launch for the docks, the new launch. What's gonna happen with that is um. Yes.
I just have the contract. The mayor was questioning the price and the contract that was signed and approved was for two hundred thirty-six thousand and twenty-three dollars. So.
And we paid up the fifty some thousand dollar. Down payment on it.
Yeah, yeah.
We took, we sent in a down payment. So what's gonna be, are you aware whether it came in high and low?
Uh, no, no, we'll have to check.
Well, we can pull it in check with them. I mean, um, okay. I mean, we could.
Yeah, cuz they never came back and helped repair the attachments.
Right.
So that was with, were they attached to the?
They were here that first day.
Right, when they delivered them, but the engineer was here.
The second day.
The second day.
Yeah.
But they, they were here on part delivery, but they didn't stick around to help us.
Copper didn't do, copper did what they contracted for, which essentially to manufacture the docks, deliver the docks.
Yeah.
Um, where the project went awry, besides the timing, was when we went to hook them up to the abutment and the Oregon State Marine Board gave us the wrong amount. So this really, that had nothing to do with copper. Copper didn't mess that up. Copper had no responsibility. It would've been nice had they stayed, but they didn't. They're in Washington, so. But we will verify the exact amount and then um we'll just tell them that it'll come back to the next one. I'm not sure what the council wants to do if it comes in over what we said we do. But, cuz it could be, at least if you could say, you know, took longer, delivered from the other dock, that's.
They walked in the background to do, yeah, walked in, moved in.
What I'm trying to get to is that this is a grant and so we will refund the, uh, most of this. Is it a ten percent uh match or twenty? Do you remember?
I don't remember, but I wanna, yeah, I wasn't involved in the formation of that. I wanna say it's twenty.
Maybe twenty.
Yeah, I wanna say it's twenty.
Okay. All right, so are there any other questions or comments on the?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Mayor, I have a question. Thank you.
Yes, please.
I noticed on the accounts payable that we had a, uh, stolen and I was just wondering what the circumstances of that were.
Do you understand what that was?
You'll have to repeat that. I think you kinda glitched a little there.
We couldn't understand.
I understand. In the uh, in the payments, it was noted that we had weed eater stolen and replaced. Was wondering, Lady could comment on that?
Yes, that was back uh over a year and a half ago um when they were doing the sighting on the uh city hall that the contractor's tools were stolen out of the barn in the back um and nothing was recovered. And we had a weed eater and a generator stolen at that time, so we just replaced the weed eater that was stolen. We never really turned it into insurance because of the deductible was more than what the weed eater cost, but we just, we just got another weed eater for like two hundred and sixty dollars.
I'm just curious, were the contractors' insurance company paid? Were they lost?
No, he lost every time.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I will make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
I can second it.
It's been moved and seconded to accept our consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, thank you. Okay, we'll go on to um commission committee reports. Anything from emergency this month?
Did I say anything about that?
Yeah, um, so I have a couple of items. First of all, the um Lincoln County and Jimmy Damaris had a wildfire presentation. It was not well attended. We had maybe fifty people there, but still the people that were there enjoyed it. She gave extremely good information. She had a lot of information on the table that we could look at and it was, um, it was very beneficial. So anyway, I wish more people were there, but it, it is what it is. And um you'll see a flyer that is um in your, in your information. This particular flyer, um, at the last emergency care this meeting, we thought it would be a good idea to have this type of flyer asking our citizens to become more involved with actually the process of what we need. We talked about now that we have some grant money, we might be able to, or a budget of money, we might be able to buy some sleeping bags and tools and things of that nature. But it occurred to us that there's probably people that like to donate that type of thing. And so this is just simply to let them know that these items are needed if they would like to bring them and that way we will save money. Because I know that we probably have tools and sleeping bags and things that we could get rid of. I'm not sure, but I think almost everyone would have that type of thing. And another thing that I thought of too, while we have people coming to the fiftieth, we're gonna have a table there. It's gonna have three people at the table on the committee or from the committee. And I thought it would be beneficial to, as we're talking to people about emergency planning and things of this nature, to possibly get some type of mapping started. Um, if someone comes up and talks to us, we could say we're trying to get neighborhoods figured out and determine who the neighborhoods are, trying to find nurses and engineers and doctors and things of that nature. Then if we could talk to them, if they're interested in having some type of list, that way we could perfect that list later on when we're working in the committee to do so. But that's just a thought that occurred to me, that that's a good idea when we're talking to them to get their attention, get their more involvement in a particular committee, what we're trying to accomplish. Because we still need a lot of items and I think that they would probably be willing to not only give items, but also to be involved with the neighborhood groups. So, and that's all that I have. Lindsay, do you have anything?
No, it sounds good.
Thank you. Any questions for Joyce? Um, harbor restoration? I wanna talk about that later.
I'll need to answer later.
Thank you. You ready to harbor?
Um, nothing since the last.
Okay, nothing from the houseless parks? Anyone from parks this evening? Okay, funny. Anyone from funny and salmon enhancement? You're up.
Do we, do we get the double teaming?
Double team, absolutely.
All right, you wanna sign the year? I do. Uh, from what I've learned, you know, being this, on this commission the last couple of years, uh, I thought it would be best to let you know what's going on. When we get the salmon eggs from ODFW, we throw them in hatch boxes, about twenty thousand of them. And we count the eggs that don't hatch and this year it was around twenty-one hundred. So about a ten percent loss. Then as the eggs hatch, they turn into what we call fry and we collect them in a collection box. Scoop them up with a net, take them up and dump them into a pen in the reservoir. And then every day, prior to shining, we go up and feed them. Uh, this year, last year, there was a feeding frenzy every time we went up. This year, there was no such feeding frenzy. So on Friday, Vinnie and I pulled the net and looked at it. And we had about eighty, uh, well, let me go back a little bit. As they grow in the pen, they go from fry to fingerling when we do the clip. We release them into the reservoir and they grow into what we call smolts, which are about six to seven inches long. And this year, there was about eighty smolts in the net along with several salamanders which shouldn't be there, as well as a, about a twelve inch cutthroat.
What?
We pulled the net out, emptied all of the fish that were there in, back into the reservoir. There were no fingerlings. Uh, there were a couple of holes that I could put my fist through and the net was a woven plastic that we got from ODFW. So we're looking at getting a new net and that's where he should take over.
Okay. We've had some terror problems before and other than when they attacked and started for the railings, little bolts sticking out, there isn't anything for them to hang up on. You know, if we deployed that net, perhaps we tore some walls off. The net that we've had for eons kind of that little bit. And so the holes in the net are called a mesh. And so the net we're using this year, the mesh was slightly bigger and our capture net down at our tank, that mesh is just slightly bigger and even though the fish wouldn't get away, when we scoop them up out of the capture tank, there'd probably be ten, twenty, thirty percent of them that got through all the little holes. So when we were up there thinking about no activity, we're going, well, did they escape? Or obviously they did. Uh, so with the net thing, um going through Inwood Marine, they have contacts with people that build nets. We, I sent them up pieces of net that didn't work and piece, piece of our old, old one that worked very well. And the, the mesh is so small in that that they actually sewed it in a machine, like sewing machine. And we're just, uh, I thought maybe I'd get the bid price back today on that and what and why.
We're clinging for budget purposes.
Well.
They're, they're trying to raise a lot of that money themselves. I have mentioned the budget, but I think they wanna try to raise a lot of themselves.
We have these and we're trying to shame everybody into buying one for twenty dollars.
What, is this a passageway?
Yeah, maybe.
I've heard.
This, this is a new and improved model with, it's a stepper.
If, uh, if you want to get the older one, but not actually stick it on anything, right? You know, just have it as kind of a support because didn't you say that the backings were coming off or?
This is a new.
Not that we want. I don't know if we wanna throw the rest of it down.
He was doing a test drive by his truck, but we redo that.
Cuz we have all sorts of those.
So not only a primary, we just wanted to make an awareness of our.
So great. Can I ask a question, Vinnie?
So just because you didn't have them in your nets, don't mean that the fish didn't survive, right? Because we had a lot of flood, floodwaters. They could've, they could've.
We, we are seeing some fingerling activity in the grass near the shore. But the, the rest of them out in the, in the lake are all smolts. Yeah, the, the pen protects them from predators. Once they get through there, you know, there'll be some that survive. We don't know how many. Anyway, we only know that of the eighteen thousand roughly that we drove to come to there, there's nothing left.
So, so no fish.
So maybe I'm not understanding.
No fish are close to you.
So you expect them to be within the pen? Is that what you're saying? Because um, I mean, there could be high productivity in the water. Maybe that's why they're not.
The water temperature was a lot colder and even the fish outside of the pen wanted to stay lower, really inactive until
Right.
here a couple of days go after the bug hatch. So, but the fingerlings, so we'd normally clip her about like so and the smolt that are in there turn color hand size, hand size and then the cutthroat trout. Uh, like all that, so.
And they prey on them.
Oh, yeah. That's like a dog at a two-year-old's birthday party.
The cutthroat is prey on the young.
You can relate to that.
We have the largest salmon will prey on the younger ones.
Yeah. So we're not gonna have, uh, we'll see what that price that net is. And we, I don't want to lean on the, the state for this. They've already contributed one and a lot of support. We're gonna, we'll see what the prices, see what's going on. Some of these things have changed some people into some pretty big pledges already.
Good for you.
How much does a net cost, a new net?
I, I wouldn't say for sure, but I'm gonna say that it's in the six to seven thousand dollar range, just guessing.
I think we should still put it in the budget just to make sure that we have it. We, it's crucial that we have it. So I think, I think we'll go ahead and add that to our budget.
Or half of it?
Yeah. So we cover the entire.
I'll get the bid in as soon as we can.
Okay.
So the bad, bad sad news, it's no offense, but the good news is we have hot dogs left over. And, and what, what we want to do is on that day up at that site, do stream watershed education.
But you both.
Oh, that's, that would be nice.
Do you know what day that's gonna be?
July fifteenth.
July fifteenth. So.
Is, are you gonna do it at nine o'clock again or usually?
Uh, we haven't got that far. We probably.
Maybe later if you're gonna do that once.
Yeah.
Maybe later if you're gonna do that once.
Right, like uh, like eleven or ten, yeah. Uh, so anyway, I think that's important, you know, cuz that creek is uh, according to the state, that reservoir, that creek, that's theoretically the only place we can put fish. We didn't put it south Deepwater Bay Creek, but that was an exception because there'd been dredge out the rest.
Okay.
So anyway, all the watershed people, I've, I've been taking veer for having that uh, a lot of things there. And speaking of watershed, it's pretty industrious logging doing around on the backside of that. I have a, I'm on the, on the fly list. Next time I goes up in an airplane, I was gonna photograph that. And there's been some recon down below, um, so that's kind of it. And Valerie in that, um, was it Thompson's property? Kind of like that. I don't know where that's going, but you cruised out of that.
Yeah.
And we know that that internet and stream looks like it's pretty vital. It doesn't go where the map says. It seems to go down to the flood plain and then parallel that creek for quite a ways. We, um, we wanted to meet with those people and do a walkthrough and do some mutual understandings where when we did the cruise again with our biologists, they said, well, if you get some big stuff materials, we'll put it around here and here and we'll let them have us out go or creek and the things and that. So those people will be in there with equipment, trying to get rid of the sumps and we know where they can put some of them. Did we get it all? I think you got it all. I have one other thing. Brady?
Yes.
Have you had any contact with the timber company that's there?
Yeah, yeah, I have. Um, they have sold it. I don't recall the name of the new owner. But they did reach out to us and said that the, the verbiage for no spraying herbicides um or ousted, which is above they sprayed for, um, is still in that. They're, they're not gonna spray anything up there. Even backpack spraying or aerial. And um they are doing as much silk control as they can. They put warbles out, which is uh bags of chips and stuff that absorb the runoff. So um they're being mandated to do that as a protocol through the forestry. And they assured me that everything is going as planned, but they are moving a lot of timber out.
Is that north of South Deepwater Bay Creek?
Uh, the old north, north and the tributaries into North Creek.
Yeah, it's all right, man. Yeah, south, south of the creek kind of meanders more towards the uh south on the backside. Um, if you follow it back, um, it kind of angles more towards Cape Cod or that, that way.
Do you, do you wanna do a drone? Uh, some drone photography? You, you really wanna go over the plane and look down on it? Is that?
We'll, we'll take anything we can get.
Okay, man.
In the bike plane.
I have a friend that uses a drone pilot for stuff she does. I'll ask her.
Sure, that'd be great.
If either donated or.
Yeah.
Do you, do you know a drone person?
Yeah, our sheriff, Deputy Casey does drone. We'll do it for him.
Sweet.
We'll just ask and see if they would, would they know where or don't.
Okay.
They'll do it. All right. And we.
What's it?
Oh, man.
Sorry. This speaks to the need really for us to um protect our watershed.
Yeah.
Um, and I spoke recently to the guy that had come previously from the conservation fund. And there is money um from Water Resources Department, both loans and grants uh to acquire drinking water watersheds for protection. And what the conservation fund can do is actually put up the money to and then um while we're getting grants and help us with the arrangements. But that's down the line. We have to really decide. We've got to enter our strategic plan if we wanna do this. And um cut over land is about four million, maybe, if I understand. So the good news is that it's cheap. Bad news is that it's totally demolished, so. Anyway, I think we shouldn't uh forget that. We really need to pursue this sooner or later.
On the other side of it, you know, they're trying to make a living. They're cutting one or more kind of millions in Deepwater Bay and well, whatever. And uh, but they're also sports fishermen and everything, but.
You're talking about a corporation that is no longer lobbying companies. These are investment companies. They're cutting every forty years now. So no, I don't buy that.
Anyway, the salmon enhancement's position on that, like know what's going on, that we're never gonna come in there adversaries and must really see something.
Where can we buy the stickers?
Uh.
We have them here. Not from me, but from you, yeah.
Yeah, or the, or the field block, Harbor Mask.
Yes.
Right.
You have the old set. They don't, they fade and they're not good. The new batches.
If, if you put them outside, it'll be inside someplace. On the inside of the cart, not gonna create too much problem, but the ones that they're sticking on the outside of the old ones were dilapidated and coming unglued.
And if I can get some, we'll have them on Saturday for people at the city table.
Yes.
I will see what Mr. White has to say about it. And with all due respect, I'm gonna talk and run it as usual.
Except that um at the city table, we would like people from different commissions to also spend a few minutes just in case anybody wants to know what the salmon enhancements do or the planning of emergency or all houseless committee. So if anybody can spend a little bit of time in that booth, that would be great.
We'll be there.
I think Dennis was bomb told.
Hopefully that's a better picture, so there you go.
So we are going to make room for more houseless.
Any other questions for salmon enhancement this evening? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was sad news, but.
We got my apologies for the ash and all.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Okay, moving on to public comments. Are there any public comments?
I said no.
Okay. Any, no public comments? Okay, moving on to our fiftieth. We are down to a wire.
We're down to a wire. Um, four days to go and I have done an anti-running dance.
It looks really good now. It looks much better now.
Um, I think west side looks sixty degrees and twelve percent chance of running, so I'll take those odds. Yeah, I appreciate Kim coming up with this flyer. Basically, everything that we need to know. Uh, I do encourage everyone to get their T-shirts, um, sit staff to make sure you have it for Saturday.
Oh, we can get it anytime.
Yeah, well, if you wanna wear it.
Yeah, but right out here.
Yeah, if you wanna wear it.
Can you take them up anytime?
Awesome. Yes, I wanna do that. So does anybody have any questions about anything that's on these few pages?
I just wanted to update and really thank um Pacific View, Jane Tolo, Slajow right there, Bill and Teddy Masala. Um, they have donated the chiefs and his families a lodging for Friday and Saturday nights. And so I wanna do a shout out for them. We'll do a nice thank you at the end. And then I'm working on the basket as well.
Yeah, we have, um, Dylan is gonna get the baskets up ready for.
Well, um, the mayor's willing to do the shopping and I'm just going to assemble.
Okay, all right, so it's a combination. And then we're also gonna have little gift bags for the kids, little prizes and things of that nature. Um, Kathy had one of the prizes and Kim stole it.
I did. It was a harbor seal baby stuff.
So, so Kathy said she would.
I snagged it.
So we're gonna try to make a fund for the kids, but um anyway, everyone, um, I think knows where, where they're going to be or where they requested to be. Brady, any questions?
Yeah, I did. Um, so in our packets, I saw a resolution for the safety in loading safety. I didn't see a resolution, a dedication for the first family sign.
We didn't get it together.
Sorry, I'll take that for you. I will put one together and send it out and if you feel like you need to have a meeting to I said before we use it, if you lose quick, do that we. And where um, where in the schedule does the uh, do the, does the music come in? And the, I guess the alternate music.
Right. We're gonna, we're gonna start at eleven-thirty with the music.
Eleven-thirty?
Yeah, Brady and I and um, he's got Michael Dean on board helping with the schedule, but we're gonna do eleven-thirty. We're gonna start the music and go until around twelve-thirty and that's when we're going to do the dedication for the sign and then music for another half an hour. And then we're gonna start with families sharing and we start with, we start with the depot family first and give families ten, fifteen minutes, then we'll go back to music uh for another fifteen, twenty minutes and that's how the rest of the day will go. And we'll, we'll ask people, um, the Robisons are working on uh speaking um and other families are working on speaking, so as we get people um coming in, then we'll give them a chance to uh speak about their lives and, and going up to Deepwater Bay.
Are you doing a certain time to cut the cake or the cakes available the whole day?
I, I, I think it's up to Lindsay and Autumn, you know, but I think that if anyone wants to be the cake.
At a certain time.
Let's just.
It might be nice for the chief.
Well, we can make it a.
The chief to cut the first. I, that would be fun for me to do.
Okay.
Or some microphone sound.
We could kind of, we can, you and I can, we'll be on the microphones to figure out when we wanna introduce that.
So the cake should be after people have eaten as regular food, so maybe
Yeah, maybe.
starting at two or something? What's that?
It sounds good.
I don't know, making it up.
I think two is maybe.
Okay, yeah.
At two to two-thirty or something, yeah.
I think we should have a time for it and I think we should be coming up willy-nilly, full time to get.
So what time?
Two thirty maybe? If that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, I would think that, I was gonna.
I, I would say two, yeah.
Do you have a date?
Because we see.
I'm still not capable of.
We're still getting together.
But, but people don't stay until four.
Yeah, you know.
So two?
Yeah.
So we'll try to.
Okay, okay, two for the cake. And all the things that we'll need to cut it will be.
I've had everything, I've had everything.
Oh, yeah.
I've supplied everything.
Plus, um, napkins and legs and gloves.
We have, I mean, we'll.
So do we have paper plates?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, good.
And not knives and, not knives, but we're cutting knives and we have scooping utensils. And forks and.
And do we have garbage cans and recycling bins?
Yeah.
We have a gar, we have garbage containers, and we'll try to get recycling implements put on the recycle ones, we don't really have. But we'll have like a sign, recycle sign, like we do at the salmon bay, it'll be regular garbage and then recycle.
So Kathy and Brady and I went down to the park and kind of like measured things up for the table. When you first come in, the food trucks are going to be in the parking lot, and the emergency preparedness, or the EOC weather, trailer's going to be there, then we'll have, we're putting the cake under the shade, I hope that'll be a good idea. And then, when you come into the left, it's gonna be emergency preparedness, then the cake, city's gonna have a table right in the middle. Beer garden is going to be not attached to it, I'm sorry.
That, that's been changed up, uh, the city table, which will have a sign and sheet, you know, the Hello Lion is, the t-shirts, stuff like that, Brady, put it up front.
Yeah, just, just, just to welcome people.
Just so, as you go down the sidewalk, there'll be one booth, another booth, another booth, the C Bo, and then the eating tent.
He has the, you have the, you wanna see the floor, the western floor plan he has.
I don't have that yet. Yes, they'll have the floor plan when you get out.
And what about the parking situation, are we gonna try to make sure people can park?
Yeah.
It's, the other day, it was, you know, all the people that go to charter are parking in a parking area for the park.
We're gonna close that off the, the night before.
Yeah.
So Friday, we're gonna go down late at night and walk off half the parking lot, cone everything else off, cone the playground parking lot.
Um, Kim, were we able to get security to go out there?
Um, they, we have Casey Washington, he's got people set up for it, and all of us will.
All the locals are keeping an eye on that.
We're not putting anything down there, but it's easy for them to do until the night before, and then we.
Okay.
Like, there are two tents down there, but those are the big tents that, it's not something I can use.
And we have nice tablecloths, and we're gonna have, it's, it's gonna be nice.
It's a, it's a, it's a ocean theme.
Yeah.
Obviously, for, you know, the, so, so everything's got options.
So, could we let the volunteers park beyond the chain on the side where they do fish group thing?
Yeah, that, on the side of the.
Because I'll do that for the salmon, yeah, the side of the north of the creek.
Yeah, because I think we keep, they wanna fire one through there, fire paramedics and stuff through that, and also, they also want another paramedic one through the event on the.
I'm just thinking, just the volunteers, is the only people.
Yeah, we have to, we could, or locals or whatever, but we have to somehow police that, if we want just volunteers, someone to stand there.
Can volunteers park on the harbor side and walk across?
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, well, that'll be cool.
Oh, I know.
Maybe I could see all and walk.
I can see a lot of people.
A lot of people are elderly from the community.
No, I'm not talking about the volunteers.
Well, same thing.
I will, we'll get that.
We're gonna walk, hopefully a lot of people will just walk, but.
I'm gonna walk.
I think there'll be people that are parking like in Harpers, or Harpers States and places like that, that's what I've encouraged people to do. And I, I hope we have enough tours in, but I think.
I would be happy to shut them before, if I knew.
I would too.
Open that chain that we could have playing.
I'll spin the chain.
It comes across.
It's on the ground first. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, so parking, you know, for salmon bay, yeah, we used to use the Shell station, Dr. Navo over there and see if you'll, and you'd have to have somebody up there to park the cars.
Sure.
And once that's full, then that's it.
You can park at City Hall, you mean, Fish Hall.
I, I envision people parking on the side of the street, but I don't know that they can police that. You know, the road going Shell Avenue going down to Harbor.
If we have somebody out there, we can certainly police it, we might have a lot of volunteers.
You can cone it.
Or cone it, exactly.
We're gonna cone the parking, we're just worried that if it's a calm ocean, they're gonna walk fishing. So we're gonna have to really say there's an event, cones at the table. We, and they, kind of like you did, I think, salmon bay.
I did send to the Oregon State Marine Corps, they do a weekly report of all the harbors, so I sent, I hope you want it to them that this is what was going on, this is the time. We're not closing the launch, but that this is going on.
And iFish is another site too for Oregon, and fishermen, so, yeah, that's a good idea.
And what time are we supposed to be there, so?
Well, a lot of the, four of us can get there about nine, the food trucks are gonna be at nine thirty. But I think you don't have to be there that early, just, if you wanna get a carton of fish, you might wanna come early, but.
Four o'clock's free to it.
We've been telling people we're coming though, we've been telling volunteers to come.
Yeah. But if y'all were gonna walk, then, then that doesn't matter.
I think we should urge people to walk.
I understand, oh, yeah.
So, moving on, any other questions?
Oh, we wanted to talk about what you have there, yeah?
Yes, yes, Kimberly found this, this was presented to the Parks
Commission.
Commission years ago, and this was done by Ron Swartz.
Ron Swartz?
Yeah.
But, but it is from People Are Dancing Again, and it's copyrighted book.
Oh.
So, no. Unless we have permission to use.
Well, I, I, if the council was interested in it, my next step would be out to reach out to Ron to find out exactly what kind of permissions he had to do this. He didn't know anything, but he could have already had permissions, I don't know that, but I would have to find out when they did them up.
So, but where would we have that anyway? We thought about what we would do is print it out and then post them on a, a big poster board.
It is very dumb.
So people can take their time to.
I mean, it's really nice, but it's very redundant. There's like four different types about the, you know, the Afghazcan language and all this stuff. I don't know, I, I looked at it and I really enjoyed reading it, but I'd be really concerned about using images and and even the information without permission.
Right. I wouldn't be going to pursue it unless the council was interested. And it doesn't appear so, so we can go on.
Okay.
I think it's really interesting information, but I don't know about the copyright.
I would have to find it, and that is something I could easily find.
Yeah, if you could look in the, I would be interested in if, if there's an allowance for it, I think it's really interesting.
Do you find using it?
Just hide it out.
Well, the thing is, we have the dedication to the sign, and there is a lot more other information, but that's just my opinion, is just leave it to the sign.
I agree, yeah.
Because this could be offensive, some of these images, that if we don't have permission, I am really concerned, because even when I went to the Lincoln County Historical Society for, to try to get additional images for the slideshow, they provided me one or two that of the historic, and they said, you know, the tribe doesn't want, even though we provided the tribe some of these images in person, like they don't want it to be shown. So some of them are for one time used, and then all the, move them, so we can put them on the website, but yeah, if, if we want to use this in the future, I think we, we need to get clearance from the tribe, not Ron.
Yeah, and by book.
I would never find out from Ron exactly what the prominence is on this. And then, if he says, well, there isn't any, then, then the council could say, oh, we don't even, because it would be, trying to get the prominence on that would be a pain, but if he's already got, and I'm sure he can do this, I would just wanna see that he had permission from, from the tribe to do. But this is something that he created on, so I don't know the answer to that question. I just know this is what was presented to, I found it in a folder, it was presented to the Parks Commission.
So this was part of the background that he had, I, I was involved in the minimum of the sign, he had like ten different things, he wanted them all on the sign, and then working with the tribe and with Vaughn, he kept on cutting it back, and so, the sign is what it is, and I hope we got it updated, but, yeah, I think it's worth asking him, but I think we probably need to go to the tribe as well before we put any on our website or.
Well, maybe for you job, do the research, and then we'll just decide if we can make it a little later. If, if we can, like I said, if he says, oh, I just put this together, I'll, yeah, I'll.
And I wanted to think, Valerie, completing the postcards together.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they turned out to be great. So that worked out good, we've got our signs all around and t-shirts and.
You guys are careful with a little Facebook stuff, I bet.
It's one, yeah.
Wonderful thing. Glad that you've been repeating it.
Yeah.
It's great, yeah.
Pardon me, Carla mentioned the N F K's parking lot on paint lanes is an option for people who want to walk, oh, okay.
Wait, wait.
Okay. Where are you parking on that street?
Okay, anything else on the fiftieth?
Just pass the right, the right, between anchor and propl.
Okay, let's move on to National Safe Voting Week. Normally, our coast guard is here, but I guess they're missing an action. So, we have a proclamation declaring National Safe Voting Week, May twentieth to the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. For over one hundred million Americans, voting continues to be a popular recreational activity. During National Safe Voting Week, the US Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe voting partners encourage all voters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Safe voting begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most voting accidents, and that life jackets could be nearly eighty-three percent of voting fatalities. Through basic voting safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment during life jackets, attending safe voting courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating. We can help make, ensure voters on America's coastal inland and offshore waters stay, stay safe throughout the season. National Safe Voting Week is observed to be bringing attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational voters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas, on average, six hundred and fifty people die in voting-related accidents in the US, seventy-five percent of those fatalities are caused by drowning, and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or court judgment and not by boat equipment or environmental factors, and whereas a considerable number of voters will lose their, lose their lives by drowning each year, we'd be alive today had they worn their life jackets. The City Council of Depot Bay reclaims May twentieth through May twenty-sixth National Safe Voting Week and encourages all those who vote to practice safe voting habits and wearing life jacket at all times while voting. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as of now?
So.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the Safe Voting Week affirmation, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Moving on here, okay, did we read about, oh, we've got Lincoln Health, Public Health Information, ladies, come on up. Please, sit your knee, and who signed in as well?
Yes, so we have both signed in, but good evening, everyone, I'm Erin Kent-Neyers, my name is Isabelle Cisco, and I work for Lincoln County Public Health. I'm our Overdose Prevention Coordinator of the Public Health Department, and I oversee Lincoln, Wayne, and Denny County, so it is a regional position. I'm joined this evening by my colleague, who'd like to step out, her name is Jessie Noble, and she is our home reduction outreach worker in our production program. I'm here today to talk about overdose and substance use trends in Lincoln County, specifically in this part of North County, and I'm also here to give, if there's time, a brief overview of naloxone and Narcan, whoever wants, and the rest. This presentation came about from meeting Lindsay and having her be like, this is excellent information, and the county council could, city council could benefit from this. Do you wanna introduce yourself or share some of your experiences?
Hi, I am Jessie Noble, I am the home reduction specialist for Lincoln County Public Health, so I'm the first and out in the field, kind of working with everybody, gathering all the information that makes the trends that Isabella's going to talk about, so if people have additional questions, me, I'm here to help support that as well.
Great, and I do have a slideshow, printed copies for everyone, a brief presentation of a company's main talk, and. Great, oh, you're so ahead of you, thank you so much. So on the second page of this slideshow, you'll see some goals and objectives that I wanna cover this evening through the talk. And the second half of this really is just a basic training on Narcan and naloxone. What I find to be most important and pertinent about this information is the first half of this presentation. So I'm gonna give a broad overview of home reduction and talk about what home reduction is and why this approach is effective here in Lincoln County and in state of Oregon. I wanna get some background onto how opiates work and how they are dangerous in relation to opioid, or related overdoses. Talk about why this is important and pertinent information specifically here in Lincoln County, and then I wanna go over some overdose and substance use trends. And if there's time allowable, I'll run through a brief training on how to use Narcan and naloxone, and Jessie and I have brought some Narcan with us this evening, so if any of you find this information helpful and you would like to take some Narcan home with you, you're more than welcome to do so. Next slide, please, Kim, thank you so much. So home reduction approach, we have an outreach program here in Lincoln County, it's our mobile van, Jessie goes out at fixed site locations throughout the county every week and provides certain service programs. But what home reduction is, it's an effective approach to reduce risk when accidents is not feasible, practical, or possible. I think many people who are familiar with the term home reduction understand that it is related to substance use and substance use disorders. But I tend to take a more broad outlook and a broader approach to home reduction, so my opinion, home reduction is anything we do to reduce our risk of intentional injury or death, so putting a seatbelt on in a car, wearing sunscreen on a Sunday at the beach, all of those things are home reduction. But in this context, it is an effective approach in, for substance use disorders, and has been used really effectively since the nineteen eighties in the United States, and actually longer before that in Europe and the UK. It is an evidence-based practice, so we have data, national and statewide data, that proves that this is a pathway to recovery for people struggling with substance use disorder. Just some national statistics for you to kind of set the context. People who engage in certain service programs are five times more likely to enter drug treatment and about three times more likely to stop using substances. Additionally, there is cost savings for taxpayers related to having active certain service programs. Obviously, some of that money is attributed to healthcare costs, if we're reducing overdoses and reducing risk that is tied to substance use disorder, we're saving taxpayers money and healthcare costs, but it also counts for public works costs, right? If we have less ridges that are improperly disposed of in our parks and our water system, we save taxpayers money by having to clean up those surfaces. The approach that we take is nonjudgmental, we support people whatever stage of readiness they're at, and that includes not being ready to stop using substances. We recognize the whole person, and we also recognize the influence of poverty, past trauma, discrimination, social isolation, and culture. And the point of this approach is to ensure agency and empowerment to build relationship and compassion with people so that if they ever are interested in seeking services to start on path to recovery, they feel comfortable approaching us to do that. Next slide, please. So just in general, I wanna go over some clinical understandings and sets and definitions of what opiates are and how they work. So opiates are depressants, they lower your breathing when you take them, and so when someone overdoses on opiate, they stop breathing. The naloxone is a medication, it's an opiate antagonist that temporarily reverses the effects of this overdose and allows the person to start breathing again. Essentially, it buys you time, call number one, and get that person into emergency medical services. Next slide, please. So we have an image on this screen that just is basically a clinical representation of what happens when we take substances. So the brain has specific receptors for opioids on the surface, and how those substances work is that when you use drugs, those molecules are dissolved in the bloodstream, and molecules from those substances bind to those very specific receptors in the brain. Those receptors are specific to opiates only, so other substances would not work the same way. And how an overdose occurs is you have too many of those molecules bind to too many receptors at the same time, and this slows and eventually stops breathing. Next slide, please. And so essentially, the way Narcan or naloxone works, it's the same medication, it's the brand and generic names, but it's an opiate antagonist, so it has a strong affinity to these receptors in the brain, and it binds in the place of these molecules, and sometimes even kicks molecules off the receptors. And what that does is it reverses. And what that does is it um reverses the effects of the opioid overdose, so clinical manifestations. Other questions about that before? Okay, great. Next slide, please. Uh so when we're talking about opiates, what are we talking about? So in the context of Narcan, it is only successful and useful on an opiate overdose. So opiates include hydrocodone like Vicodin Norco or lower tab, hydromorphone like the Wadded, oxycodone like OxyContin and Percocet, oxymorphone, codeine, morphine, fentanyl, both for clinical use and synthetic fentanyl, heroin, and methadone. Next slide, please. Melaxone does not reverse the effects of the overdose from alcohol, fedradiazepines, benzos, or anti-anxiety medications, lusine, and klonopin, methamphetamines, cocaine, and LSD. However, I will mention that with the current state, flat as well. Current state of our drug landscape currently, um fentanyl can be cut into any substance. And we know this, right? We see this happen all the time. And so my recommendation is if, hopefully not, but if ever you're in a situation where you see someone who is overdosing and you have Narcan on you, but you don't know what the person took, give the person the Narcan. If there are opiates like some fentanyl on board, hopefully that Narcan will be successful in reversing that overdose. If you give someone Narcan and they overdose on methamphetamine, but there's no opiates mixed in, you're not going to hurt them. You're not going to do any harm and make the situation worse than what you're already saying that person had in their overdose. However, the Narcan won't be successful in helping that person start breathing. Next slide, please. So why is this important? Why are we having this conversation with the city council of Deepwater Bay? And and why am I talking to communities about this in Lincoln County? So over the past two months and actually really over the past two years, Lincoln County law enforcement has seen a pretty huge increase, a substantial increase in the seizure of these counterfeit um fentanyl pills. And these are manufactured to look much like you uh pill that you get from a pharmacist prescribed to you. The image on the screen, you can see that there is an image of oxycodone and Adderall. The top part of that image are what real pills look like. So if you got an oxycodone prescription uh from your pharmacist today, you would see the blue M thirty pill. They have an M sub on them and a thirty on the other side because they're thirty milligram tablets. You'll notice that the photograph underneath that, which looks nearly identical, is a fake counterfeit tablet. There's really no way to tell the difference between this real and counterfeit tablet. And these counterfeit pills contain fentanyl in them, sometimes lethal um doses of such. The D E A estimates that about seventy-two percent of this entire quantity of pills on the market right now in the United States contain two milligrams of fentanyl, which is enough to um kill someone essentially.
What was that percentage?
Uh seventy-two roughly. And that's like a stat from twenty twenty-one. Um so this is a huge issue concerning youths specifically, I think, is where I'm the most nervous because one, pills are an easier mechanism for experimentation. But two, there's no way to tell that there's fentanyl in these. And so it can be very easy to be a youth and be at a party and someone whips out a bag of tablets that they think are, you know, just natural oxycodone that you get from the doctor, uh but they're not and they can relate to fentanyl. It's also important to know, and we're going to talk about this on the next slide in more detail, but fentanyl is not evenly distributed in substances. And so a batch of pills, you can take one pill and get pretty high, but be fine. And you take another pill from that same batch and then have an overdose because there's not evenly distributed amounts of fentanyl. Next slide, please, and thank you. So fentanyl is deadly. We know that fentanyl is about fifty times more potent than morphine and about a hundred or fifty times more potent than heroin and about a hundred times more potent than morphine. The image on this slide is a comparison between heroin, fentanyl, and paraffinol, which is an analog synthetic fentanyl. And it's meant to um convey the difference in potency. So that amount of heroin that you see in that file is equal in potency to the amount of fentanyl. Um so fentanyl is really strong. The most common types of tablets that we see in our area are the counterfeit oxycodone, which are sometimes referred to as M thirties, dirty thirties, or blues, um because they're thirty milligram tablets. And like I mentioned, you can't tell that there's fentanyl in them. They look very, very similar to normal prescription pills. Um the pills aren't evenly distributed in their amount of fentanyl. Um we call this the chocolate chip cookie effect, right? You can take a bite of a chocolate chip cookie and have a lot of chocolate chip in one bite and take a bite from the same cookie and have another chocolate chip in the next. So um I want to convey that it's pretty dangerous to be using these substances in this is an area of concern here in Lincoln County. Next slide, please. Uh so this is, I think, the most important slide in the entire presentation. Um I'll drive three images on this slide, but I'll direct your attention to the image on the right, to the pink first. Uh so this is an an outlook of our hospitalizations for overdose in Lincoln County over the last five years, from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two. You'll notice that, you know, because we haven't collected all of our twenty twenty-three data, that that isn't complete yet. So you can see that there's kind of this huge spike as we work our way up through twenty twenty-one, a pretty large spike in overdoses in twenty twenty-one, and then that kind of fell back down to where the average has been in twenty twenty-two. That pink line in the middle describes the five, it's our trend line for the five-year average. So in Lincoln County, around eighty, um eighty to eighty-five overdoses every year. Um a lot of this is contributed to fentanyl and the drug supply.
Excuse me, when you say overdose, you don't necessarily mean people have died.
No, so this is both, um this is a hospitalization. So people who have been brought into the hospital. I'll also note that there are some caveats to this data, which we'll talk about in just a moment. Um but I want to move on to the image on the left. So hospitalization, hospitalized overdoses by month overlaid with the five-year average. So those in blue, those blue columns are our overdoses per month in year twenty twenty-three so far, overlaid with that dark timeline of the five-year average. So as you can see, in February and March, we can really, really close to getting the like same rates of overdoses as our five-year average. And um so we're we're on the trends essentially through twenty twenty-three to see what we've been seeing. Um I will say that with xylazine, which we can talk about at the end of it, or at the end of this meeting if people have questions, that xylazine is an animal tranquilizer that is not approved for use in um humans and it is finding our way to our illicit drug supply and is really dangerous in terms of overdose. So I'm concerned with that and I think that if and when that makes its way over here, um by the end of the year, that we might start seeing a substantial increase in overdoses. That last image, the chart on the front of this screen, talks about self-reported drug use. So when people go into the hospital with overdoses and they're asked what substances they were using, this is the reports that they get in. You'll notice that fentanyl, the rates of fentanyl, heroin, oxy are awfully high. But what's pretty astonishing is that meth, um stimulant use in Lincoln County and actually in the entire state of Oregon is pretty high. At the bottom of this um chart, you'll notice that there is self-reports of polysubstance use. So things like heroin and fentanyl, oxy and meth, and Xanax and fentanyl. These are people who are intentionally mixing substances. This does not count people who took what they thought was heroin and there was fentanyl put into it and they overdosed. It does not count that. I'll also mention that this is not an accurate picture for all of the overdoses um in Lincoln County. This is an area of concern and an area that we are working on to improve, not just in Lincoln County, not just in the state of Oregon, but nationally. Um this is really one small picture, right? So people, when they overdose, who live and then someone called nine-one-one for them and they were taken into the hospital. This this does not include um successful reversals of overdoses using Narcan or Melaxone in the field in which nine-one-one was not called. This does not even include necessarily fatalities of overdoses. Here in Lincoln County, we have one medical examiner's office and the only way they run a tox screen to confirm if it was an overdose is if there's drug paraphernalia found at the scene um when he must survive. And if that doesn't happen, that does not count it. Um additionally, there are other caveats to this data. And this is, again, I I want to stress that we're working to improve the picture of this in Lincoln County and the state of Oregon. But um it's pretty scary to think that this is where we're at, just with what we know about. And there's a lot more that we're not sharing about or aren't getting reported officially through our reporting systems. Um I'll pause for a moment and see if there are questions.
Do you think, do you see all the agents of this type of problem?
Yeah, so actually, I almost included a graph of that on this slide as well. The biggest demographic so far um over this five-year average was eighteen to forty-four years old. The second largest demographic is um seniors, people from fifty to sixty-five. I think a lot of that is accidental um overdoses. So grandma forgot when she took the benzo and took another one before the the time limit, you know, expired. And so um you see a lot of accidental overdoses. But yeah, most of this is is young people, eighteen to forty-four years of age.
I will pop in and add, um we do actually have a fairly large senior population in the area that does use intentionally recreational substances due to the lack of availability of painkillers. Because there were a lot of folks at one point in time where opioids were readily available. Those are no longer available and so we're seeing people seeking pain relief solutions out in the street and coming across these mixes of substances. And that's also leading to the high rate of overdoses in the population.
Are there any other questions about that before?
I do.
I read that in New Zealand, for instance, they have drug testing stations where you can actually test your pills.
Yes.
Is there anything like that around here?
So we don't have stations, but our um program is at point that I'll test things for us where you can test for fentanyl and substances before you use. There are, I think, like pros and cons of doing that. One of one of the cons is that they are kind of finicky. You have to dilute substances really precisely in order to get an accurate reading and not get a false negative. And sometimes people don't do that right. We give out um instructional guides about how to do that when we hand out fentanyl testing strips to people. But it also requires things like sterile water in order to do that. And our homeless and homeless populations don't always have access to that, although we also give out sterile waters through our program. So there are caveats to that, but um I know that nationally, the conversation is really starting to shift around having a safe supply through things like legalization because um that's the only way we can ensure that the public's going into our illicit substances. But I digress on that. That's a conversation for another time. Are there any other questions? We're going to move on. I'm going to run through the second half of this presentation rather quickly and then I'll be around afterwards if there's more questions. Um next slide. Thank you so much. You're so great. Uh so I want to talk, I want to talk very briefly about how to recognize the signs of symptoms of an overdose. And then if you ever find yourself in the unfortunate position of having to respond to one, what that would look like, um using Narcan or the loxone. Next slide, please. So the first step is to recognize the signs and symptoms. So frequent or common signs and symptoms are not breathing or breathing very slowly, turning pale, blue, or gray, especially in the lips or fingernails, making snoring, bricking, or choking sounds, becoming limp, throwing up, not responding to yelling or other stimulation. And then the classic pinpoint pupils. Next slide, please, and. Quick plug here, um so Oregon has the Good Samaritan Overdose Law, which is really important. As I've mentioned, Narcan or Melaxone is a temporary medication. It metabolizes out of the body after about thirty or thirty-nine minutes, excuse me. So it's still really important to make sure you call nine-one-one, even if you're able to successfully revive someone with this medication. The reason we plug this is that the Good Samaritan Law protects people um who are basically responding on behalf of the person overdosing and calling organs and medical help. And so if you do that, if you call nine-one-one and seek medical help for someone who's having an overdose, neither of you can be arrested or prosecuted for possessing drugs with drug paraphernalia, being in a place where drugs are used, violating parole or probation because of number one or number two, and then having upstanding warrants. I will say with measure one-ten and our decriminalization measure here in Oregon, this is changed a little bit because now having small substances on you is no longer a crime that you can be persecuted for. But there's still a lot of stigma and fear around interactions with law enforcement for our drug use in community. And so we still really try to put this information out there at this law basis to protect you and the person who's having an overdose. And we still really want to encourage you to call nine-one-one. Which leads me uh to our, you know, next couple of slides. So try and if you are exhibiting symptoms, you see that someone's having an overdose and you're like, okay, this is bad. I need to do something. Try and wake them up. So shake them or shots and if you get a response, you can do the sternal stimulation by grinding your knuckles into the breast bone for five to ten seconds. It's a very unpleasant feeling, so I guarantee to you if they are awake, they will, they will make some noise. Um and if they are not responding after that, you can check to see if they're breathing. So place your ear near the face to feel for breaths or watch to see if the chest raises and falls. And then step two, what we've mentioned is to call nine-one-one. So they may have other drugs on board besides opiates that need medical attention or they may have complications that need medical attention. So still really important to get that person into um care. Um and then, you know, they may have overdose on something additional besides opiate. So if you're polysubstance use, if they're using different substances potentially or if there was fentanyl or something else cut into whatever they thought they were using, the risk of overdose goes up substantially when you mix substances together. So call nine-one-one, always best bet.
I'm going to pop in again, real fast, because I will say that the majority of the clients that I see are polysubstance users and we're talking not just multiple opioids or multiple stimulants. We're talking combining multiple substances at once. So the likelihood is if you come across an overdose, there are going to be multiple substances involved. Narcan anyway can absolutely cause no harm.
Thank you. Um so if you've all been CPR certified, this will be pretty redundant for you all. But step four is to start rescue breathing. So if you're trained to give CPR and do rescue breathing, um before you do rescue breathing, check the mouth or food or other visible instructions. And if it's clear, go ahead and tilt the chin back, pinch the nose, and then give one breath for every five seconds and repeat this in thirty separate intervals. Next slide, please. So step four, you have Narcan on you and you're uh sure or unsure if this is an overdose. Give the Narcan or the loxone anyway. It comes in two forms. We brought the nasal here with us today, which is probably what you're all familiar with, seeing it on the news. Um you'll see a picture of a bucket canister looks like in a single dose container. And so what you'll do is you'll tilt the person's head back, put your two fingers on either side of the tip, place the tip in either nostril and insert it until your fingers touch the bottom of someone's nose. And then your thumb on that bottom piece, that's the plunger. So you'll push the plunger all the way up into the canister to deliver that full dose. I will note that um if you're giving the nasal spray, it does take longer. It's less direct route to the bloodstream, so it does take longer to kick in. So you'd want to wait two to three minutes to see if it works before you give a second theory dose. With the IM or the intramuscular injection, which we're going to talk about on the next slide, please, I think you can. Um this is a more, obviously, a much more direct route into the bloodstream. And I've been told, we've been told um from clients who have used the IM that it's um faster and a quicker acting mechanism. Um so for those of you who have never given an injection, just a quick review. Um we did out the IM form of the loxone to our program. It comes in a green kit, complete with everything that you would need to give a sterile injection. So a paraplegic glove, an alcohol pad. It's a red kit now. Oh, perfect. Great. Um two sterile syringes and then two single dose vials. So again, a single dose in each vial. What you'll do is you'll remove the cap of that vial, invert it, stick the tip of the syringe up through the tip of the vial and draw the entire content into the syringe. Um and then you'll clean, if you have an alcohol pad available to you, clean the site of the injection. It's best to use the biggest muscles, so right the outside of the deltoid or the outside of the thigh, which is what you do for an epipen. Um and then when you go to give the injection, you want to make sure that you're injecting on a straight plane or a ninety-degree angle perpendicular to the muscle. You don't want to do that at a, at an angle, right? Next slide, please. Thank you, Ken. And we give this presentation. Um okay, so step five, just continuing with CPR efforts and rescue breathing. So again, if you're using that nasal spray, it might take several minutes for that to kick in and want to continue to breathe for the person in the interim because brain damage can occur after three to five minutes without oxygen. So just a quick recap, you're going to give one breath for every five seconds. Um if this person is not breathing after three minutes, please give another second dose of Narcan. Both the IM version and the nasal come with two doses in a package, so um hopefully that works. Although I will say that with, again, the landscape of our current drug supply, it's not uncommon to have to give someone five to six, seven doses of Narcan to revive them.
I also want to add that fentanyl does have a weird side effect called the chest syndrome. So there will be times when an overdose patient may have an overdose from fentanyl specifically. It causes the chest to tighten up. It will become incredibly rigid. It will make chest compressions very difficult. That doesn't mean that you shouldn't go ahead with the chest compressions, but I all mean do it. If if we're between maybe hurting a rib or keeping a person breathing, keep somebody. But but shook somebody's humble palm, that is a very real thing and it is very negative that fentanyl is in their system. So continue to Narcan as well.
And continue to what?
If if they haven't responded to the Narcan, continue the chest compressions, even if their chest is not responding well, and give them another dose of Narcan after the three-minute wait. Because that's very negative that they're expensable specifically in their system.
But um you you were just talking about uh breathing, um chest compression.
Well, so in this, I should clarify, that's a great question. Thank you for pointing that out. So it's, this is just following the American Heart Association's guidelines for CPR. So really, it's the sixty, I believe it's sixty chest compressions a minute and then the one breath every five seconds in thirty separate intervals. I will note that the A H A recommends that for people who are squeamish or don't want to do rescue breathing because of the risk of kidney disease or whatever, um just stick to those chest compressions. It's okay not to do the rescue breaths. But in this presentation, that's what I've mentioned. But thank you for pointing that out. And what Jessie's trying to say applies either way, whether you're doing those chest compressions or the rescue breathing, you want to continue to circulate that oxygen as best as possible and then use Narcan, you know, rinse, repeat every two to three minutes, depending on how many doses you have on you. So step six, just follow up again, this is pretty redundant. But if you need to leave the person for any reason, make sure you place them in a recovery position. Roll them onto their side, place the arm closest to the ground above their head, bend the top knee, and then place their hands beneath their head for support. I will note that it's not uncommon for people who are revived from overdoses to be vomit and so it might be best to roll them into the recovery position anyway to prevent aspiration. Um so withdrawal. So you can put someone, because again, thinking back to this clinical mechanism, we're kicking those molecules of the substance off of the receptors in the brain and Narcan is binding instead. And so you can put someone into rapid withdrawal by reversing an overdose with Narcan or the loxone. Um it is really unpleasant and people are not generally happy because it it feels terrible, honestly. If you're in withdrawal from opiates, you're probably in a lot of pain. Um so the person who's dependent on heroin or opiates may go into withdrawal when the loxone kicks in. This is a list of some of the symptoms that a person might exhibit. This is a list of some of the symptoms that a person might exhibit. Um, it's just terrible if you think about it. So step seven, monitor. So we wanna stay with them for at least an hour or at least until emergency medical help arrives. Withdrawal is unpleasant, but it's not fatal. And do your best to care for that person if you have them on you. Get them water, things like that. Um, do not let them use more substances. So they still have the molecules of the substances that were onboard the first time. And when that Loxone eventually metabolizes, if they're using more substances, they could go back into an overdose. So we wanna be very careful about, um, not letting that happen. The Loxone wears off in thirty to forty-five minutes, but the drugs are still in their system. And then withdrawal symptoms will usually go away once that Loxone has completely metabolized, which is about ninety minutes after application. So just in review, if you think someone is overdosing, check for response with this, call 911. Um, implement CPR measures, whether that starts rescue breathing or chest compressions. Give a full dose of the Loxone or Narcan. Continue with your CPR efforts and then give a second dose as necessary. Rinse, repeat, depending on how many doses you have on them. And then, or how many doses it takes. And then monitor them until help arrives. And I really like this image, overdose is reversible, but death is not. Um, on the very last slide of this presentation, I have my contact information as well as a general email address for our Harm Reduction Program at the county. So if you send an email to that address, you'll get me, Jessie, and our boss, Cowie, which is honestly not a bad way to go if someone's out of the office sick or on vacation. And then we just launched our new website at the county about two weeks ago. Um, and you have a new Harm Reduction page that lists all of our fix site locations every week in the county, how to get ahold of us, a link to our Facebook page, and just kind of a word about the services we offer and, um, what we're doing in Lincoln County. So if you scan this QR code, it will take you right to that link. And, uh, feel free to reach out or contact us. And thank you so much for your time. It was so lovely to be here.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions, please, if you want? Are you really into the schools?
So yeah, so actually.
That's how we met?
Yeah, that's how we and I met. Um, a colleague and me, we're, we're calling, I, we're doing a Narcan training at the St. James Municipal School in Lincoln City. We just did, last week, this National Prevention Week, and I did some fentanyl and Narcan education through all of the high schools in the county and also Newport Middle School. I'm working to get into the health classes in high schools here in the county, but it is fairly difficult to navigate that. Um, in March, PADA, which is Partners Against Alcohol and Drug Abuse, it's a local youth coalition for substance use and alcohol abuse in Lincoln County, they hosted their annual Youth Leadership Academy, which I attended and presented at for high school students. So gave a talk about Narcan and fentanyl and really just educating. But we also did some absolute space measures as well, right? So talking about health improvement skills and healthy refusal skills for kids. Um, basically recommending, we don't want you to do drugs, but if you're going to try them, here's how you can reduce your risk and protect yourself and your friends. Um, I would like to be in schools more, but we're kind of navigating those waters as we go.
It's a very slow-going process, for sure. I mean, that procedure and policy takes a great deal of time. I'm sure you're all familiar with that process. But I will say that we do have Narcan in, say, um, all the coaches' bags. So if, if kids are going out on trips on the bus, if they're going to go to a sporting event, et cetera, um, the coaches have them in the after-school bags. They have them in strategic locations where kids are gonna be involved in after-school activities. So should anything happen on a school property or off school property where the public school is responsible for use, they do have Narcan and the Loxone kids, because I personally delivered them, so I know they're there.
Thanks for mentioning that. Yes. Yeah, kids can also access Narcan or Loxone free from our program. There's also Narcan available through the school-based health centers, um, as well, which is something that we got a lot of ask for actually from students who have, maybe they're not using substances themselves, but they have a family member or well-known home group is. Um, and they want Narcan to just be vigilant and preventative. So there are ways for youth, also in Newport, um, Newport Library, we have a great partnership with them where anyone of any age can go up to the front desk in the library and ask for an overdose reversal kit, and they can get it for free, no questions asked. And I would really love to expand that program also for the county, but we're working on it currently.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how long have you guys been doing the Harm Reduction and the fix site, mobile sites?
So we started when we got a grant in twenty, end of twenty eighteen. And it took a while to develop our policy through our county council. But I believe by twenty nineteen, we had, um, our Harm Reduction Program up and running. And then in twenty twenty, we bought our Harm Reduction van, which is when we were kind of mobile, to do fix site locations. Before that, I think our Harm Reduction worker was just doing syringe exchange out of the FQHC, like the Public Health Clinic in Newport. Um, but there was issues with that because it's, a lot of people don't wanna show up. And it's right next to the courthouse and jail. So now a lot of people wanna show up to give and draw off their syringes and pick up more. And so our coaches of the van was really a way to be more discreet and to access people where they are at for people who couldn't get down to Newport to come and see us.
Yeah, on the other point, add, we don't simply have the fix sites. I'm on call five days a week. So in between fix sites, if I have clients who aren't able to come to me to have any specific needs that need to be met, they can call me. They know that I can come directly to them. But we don't have people who might be using a substance currently in a crisis mode, on the street, in a car, trying to come to me. I mean, that's the absolute opposite of Harm Reduction. So I'll be able to come to them as well. We are also adding a nurse to our Harm Reduction team. So I will have a, um, LPN who can come around with me, provide wound care, basic health screening, basic healthcare for the folks that we're seeing in the field as well. And we're in the process of expanding our fix sites once she comes onboard as well. So there will be a lot more access. We will have two vans, which is amazing.
She's starting next week.
She's starting next week.
Yeah.
Yes, so she'll be going through the onboarding process and then we'll have her with us as well as providing additional services.
We're looking forward to that.
So are most of your clients homeless, I think?
No, honestly. Um, it's, uh, you know, I would say for me right now, it's split probably fifty-fifty. I have a good portion of, um, the community that is under housed. And people come to us for all sorts of resources. They don't have to have a substance use disorder to see Harm Reduction resources. So we can see any number of people from folks who may be transient, requiring, you know, warming supplies, food, et cetera, um, to folks who are housed and have diabetic supplies, that they can't afford to dispose of themselves. Those costs are incredibly high. Um, and certain organizations, I recently found out that the VA will distribute supplies, but they won't take them back. Um, so I actually had a gentleman come and bring over a year's worth of Sharp Spins. He had stacked in his garage because he couldn't afford the dumping fees. Um, you know, so there is a large poor population that is just now coming to, to kind of understand that we're here for everybody. And they're, they're more willing to access those, understanding that there is less stigma involved and maybe degrees in top. I would say it's split down the middle.
Amazing presentation. I didn't know idea.
Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate it being here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just glad you guys are here because it seems like the county's been so hard on our personal moments.
It, you know, I'm amazed with how progressive our program is. Yeah, I think things are coming along. I think Measure 110 mandated that we created, uh, the New York Health Resource Networks, which incorporates Harm Reduction, Housing, Employment Services. It really gets at like that holistic approach for treating substance use disorder. And each county has one. So there's one in Van Halen and Lincoln County. I like that because frankly, um, trying to do work originally is really hard because we have a very different infrastructure here on the coast and our valley neighbors do. Um, however, I think that, you know, our collaboration with our partners in Van Halen and Lincoln County has been really valuable in developing this program. And we work really collaboratively with the Harm Reduction Programs over there as well as the Harm Reduction Program at the tribe. They have a really robust, um, Harm Reduction Program out there as well. So we're very fortunate to be here and thank you very much for your time. I did bring some materials here, so you all.
I wanna brag on Isabel, just to let you know that not only does she have this job, she's also one of the top people right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The condition health is, right?
I'm just gonna set some materials out here for everybody. Uh, I know the signs of overdose, information on reversing and how to overdose. These are also some resources to partners, um, that we offer substance use and use, information on our burn, as well as information on xylazine, which cannot be overturned with the Loxone. That's a whole other world of stuff. But it is honest way here, we are seeing indications, so I wanna make sure that people have that information as well.
What do you recommend?
If anybody wants to take it home and look at it, if you wanna share it with anybody, if you have community partners that you think might be interested in it, otherwise I just can't. You definitely don't have to take it. You can take it back. I just wanted to leave some stuff in case anybody wanted to burn it. Or just always prepare.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see my.
I'm dropping off some garbage as well.
I think we can have it, uh, a vendor for our fellows and get some things from them as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of coordination we need to do that. They'll keep it with their AD in buildings or with their first aid device. So I don't think it's, yeah, I think I'm in the glove box in my car. There's no temperature storage requirement for it. Yeah, you never know. Um, so I will pick those up if anyone wants any of them.
Yeah. They should always have it in your car.
So if you want those two doses.
Yes, yes. I just remember at St. James Committee had asked about storing it in the car.
Yeah.
It's not a problem with like heat or cold.
Yeah, it's not temperature dependent. I'll also mention that there's like no, I think FDA approved for people as young as two, I think. So there's not an age restriction to use of it either, which is really nice because accidental overdoses with young children happen from time to time if, um, medications aren't securely stored and properly deployed. Also in households that are using substances. Um, another frequent question again is about the expiration dates. And, um, yeah, so, uh, there is peer-reviewed literature out there that shows that, you know, this is much like Tylenol where it doesn't, the efficacy of the medication doesn't significantly decrease after the expiration date. Um, we have a policy in our program that we can get out expired Loxone because we know that it works. Um, depending on where you get it, if you get it elsewhere, they might have a policy where they're not allowed to do that. It's just kind of dependence. But just so you all know, if you take a box home with you today and give it in your glove compartment and you're like, oh shoot, this is gonna expire, um, you can keep it in there. It's good for, what, like ten years?
Yeah, ten years past the expiration date can keep it for months. Um, it is good for up to ten years after the expiration date. It is not heat sensitive, but it is photosensitive. So if you're not using it, you wanna keep it in that box because light can infect it. That being said, it is good for ten years past the expiration date. So it's safe to keep on it for quite some time.
Wow, amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's move on to, we've got an ordinance. Has everyone had a chance to read a few of this?
Yeah.
So since this is an ordinance, um, we can read it by title only. And since.
You need your motion to read it.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion read by title only.
Well, then I'll stop.
Ordinance number three-three-seven dash.
Wait, we don't want to do the whole one because it's.
I have to read it into the directory?
No, you have to have that. You have to.
Name of the motion. Oh, okay, hold. Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on motion? We force to read it. Okay. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Oh, we have four, I'm sorry, discussion. Yes, please. Um, so, pardon me, counsel, this is just to read it by title only. Not, not the whole thing, just title only. But what if I have, uh, and then we'll go on to discussion.
Okay, fine. No problem. Sorry.
I know, but it's in the charter. This is the process in the charter. And if we vote unanimously this evening to accept this ordinance, we can do it in first, first?
Actually, you can. We would have had to, we, I looked this up. Uh, we would, we would have had to give a weeks, we would have had this, had to make this available for weeks.
Oh, okay, so we, okay, this is the first reading then?
Yes.
Unfortunate. Okay. So the motion is to read by title only. On paper, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Ordinance number three-three-seven dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending the Department of Municipal Code by adding Chapter ninety-six, restricting the use of single-use EPS foam and footwear with added, you know, purple, whatever, or poly, uh, some restrictions out there on substances. On public property, chemicals. Chemicals. Uh, I think that means foam, doesn't it? Anyway, on public property to the Department of Municipal Code and stating an effective date. And so then it goes on into this. So let's open for a discussion of ordinance before us. So, um, thank you for getting this together. This is really, um, long time coming and very good. My only concern is, um, it, it, everything is there really, but, um, it's confusing. If people don't read the ordinance, it looks like we're only restricting foam and food service items, where we really are, um, restricting all the single-use, um, items made of plastic, including polyester and foam. And where that is, is in the definition, page fifty-seven, item J. I'll just read it out. Single-use EPS foam means food service containers made of plastic, including polyester and foam, and then all the other stuff. So, um, what I would suggest, just to make it clearer, um, is to use that same language that's in J and, you know, do a, uh, finding search. Every place where it says, um, single-use EPS foam, including the title and in the where is it, um, it, it should read, um, single-use, um, single-use plastics, including EPS foam and so on. So instead of saying, for example, I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself. I'm not sure I'm getting through it all. Um, so where it says, "An ordinance amending Department of Municipal Code by adding Chapters ninety-six, restricting the use of", it would read, instead of the use of single-use EPS foam, it would say, "Single-use plastics, including EPS foam and footwear." So people will understand that we're not only restricting styrofoam cups, it's all single-use plastics. So that's what I'm suggesting, that we just do a global, um, um, addition to say, every place it says, "Single-use EPS foam", it would say, "Single-use plastics, including EPS foam."
The original, the original proposal for this was just to do the foam.
No, it wasn't. It was for.
Because.
Plastics.
So what do you, what do you mean by, are you talking about like plastic wear? Because we originally thought of, there was original, I know other cities have done the plastic wear. So they've done the single-use EPS foam, plus the plastic footwear, which would be forks, knives, you know, that sort of stuff. Um, are, are you wanting to include those items as well?
They're already included by definition.
Okay, so if they're already included by definition, why would we want to?
Because it's confusing, because if it says only single-use.
Okay.
We can have it.
Yes.
If that's what counsel's desire, we can have it.
On your favor, that.
I think the clearer we can be, the better. So this does include single-use plastic forks.
And I think for, you know, for a while.
What are we gonna use instead of forks?
Yes.
Well, there's. There's all sorts of alternatives to, to single-use.
They sell them at the Cash and Harry, or it's called the Shep's store in Newport already.
I was just there and I didn't see any.
Hmm, in like the last couple aisles?
Just a couple days ago.
Yeah.
I, I, I wasn't looking. I found forks, so we're gonna use forks.
Well, that, that's fine. I think this is gonna be based, I mean, it's gonna probably after September.
Right. We wanna make sure though, that if we're, the single-use foam is one thing, but we wanna make sure that if we're gonna say plastic wear too, that there is a readily available source close by. Now, I know there is for single-use EPS foam, but I really wasn't sure about plastic, so, but that's what.
There are special alternatives. For instance, when I lived on Maui, um, you couldn't use any single-use, everything was, um, outlawed plastic bags and there are several alternatives.
Yeah, I know Newport's, I think Newport just recently, seemed like they just recently did throughout the city, not just at public property.
Yeah. And so what, you know, this is beyond this ordinance, but what we could do, if it looks like people are having a hard time finding it, we could make them available at cost. You know, if, if people are gonna say, well, we don't, we can't find it, well, we could have it stored. I know, and you can find it, but, um, anyway, I just, I think it's, it'd just be clearer to, um, make sure it, it says it in the title and everywhere else. Any other comments?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. I've, I, I listened to this discussion about alternatives in, with, uh, you know, like forks or spoons. Uh, what are the alternatives?
There's bamboo, forks.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Compostable. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Good question.
Um, okay, so, we've done our first reading. We'll move on and agenda then. Other.
We don't, so don't vote on the first reading?
It, well, you voted on the first reading and you did that, so she's already read that.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
No, we only voted on the Tylenol part.
Tylenol, right, this is, you don't have to read the first reading, voted to read the resolution by Tylenol, which is what you get in Europe, right?
Okay.
Now, do we need to vote on, do we need a motion to accept this? Next time, yeah, next time, okay. That's what you were asking about, yeah, next time.
Next time, we should. Okay, um, okay, we've got a new code enforcement policy that.
This looks bad.
Yay, yes. Um, has everyone had a chance to read through this?
Okay, so I'll open up for discussion then, um, going forward.
Oh, this is, we're gonna vote, uh.
Tomorrow. This is, this is what we can, if we move today, we can put it in effect tomorrow.
Since it's a council policy, all you have to do is vote to approve the council policy.
So there's just one correction, I'm sorry, on page sixty of ninety. Um, it references, um, number five, at the, um, reference in California state law, so I think that just.
Bah, yes.
You know.
For a good step one.
And, um, I guess you can still, um, re- recognize the county, um, but. But we shouldn't have the, um, California.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? So it says Lincoln Municipal Code there, or by California State law, is it Lincoln County Municipal Code? I don't think, um.
We can add the county.
I don't, yeah.
I took this from a, another city to do this, so, your policy. But I can verify that if you want me to be exactly.
No, that's fine, because Lincoln County Municipal Code probably the building ordinance or something like that, but not, yeah. But you said Lincoln County is. Okay. Okay, is there any motion to accept the depot bay enforcement policy?
I don't think that motion.
Okay.
I've talked about it for years.
I know, is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Okay, it's removed and second to, uh, put into place a depot bay court, code enforcement policy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing then, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, we'll, we'll get this signed and get this out to, uh, everyone involved.
Um, public outreach on that?
Yes, I was just gonna mention that.
I haven't, I went, I started, sweep to add and then post, post that out.
Oh, good. Thank you. Um, okay, we're back to the first family sign permanent location. I, I have one question, have we talked with the depot bay, or the depot family about the location, their wishes? I haven't, but I talked to Robert Kenta. Oh, okay. He was very upset that we had the, um, cause he thought, Rana thought, um, that it was at the, um, you know, on the scenic lands there.
Yeah.
Um, so. So could we table this until we talk with them, they'll be here on Friday?
Yeah.
And get their kind of opinion as to what, you know, cause it is their lands that they had and owned. And I'd really like their opinion on where they'd like to have it at that place. Yeah, I think that, that's fine, but I think, um, um, we should at least have a discussion because we had said that we'd go down by the, um, where it is now.
Right.
Um, and, so I think.
But it was temporary, I mean.
Well, we had said that, you know, that's where we wanted it, but I, I would, um, agree that we should move it to the scenic lands, provided that the depot family is, um, okay with that.
Yeah, there are two options.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I thought we're gonna have two, I thought we're gonna leave one, that, that original one there and put the other one up.
No.
Cause we're not two.
Well.
Except that there's, there's definitely mistakes in it, if we don't care about mistakes, it's pretty.
No.
No.
I don't think we ever talked about.
No, I think it's just one sign.
Yeah. So, um, but I would like to, I would like to resolve this by making that motion that, that we move it to the scenic lands, I don't really wanna move the seal, but put it somewhere to the south of the seal probably, or somewhere. Um, but to make the motion that, um, we move the sign, um, to this scenic land area, provided that the depot family is, um, okay with that location.
Are we gonna ask them where they want it, or are you gonna ask them if they want it in a scenic area?
Scenic area versus the, um, the given two options.
Yeah.
I think so. So I, I'd really like to table this this evening, to get their opinion on it before we go forward with it.
Without an urgent.
No.
Here, there's a motion on the floor.
Right, there's no second.
Seconded though. Uh, was that, I'm sorry, was that an official motion? I thought you said you'd like to motion, but I.
No, I made a motion, but then it wasn't a second, and Kathy asked to table it. Is that, do, do we concur? We'll go forward with it when we have the celebration and get them in, uh, the family here, because it is their family history that we are honoring, so I'd like to get their opinion on. Maybe they don't want it. I, I don't know, I'd like to get their opinion, I don't want to talk with them. Um, okay, let's go forward then, we'll put this on the next agenda, and we've got the abandoned RV program and, uh, everyone's read, uh, Council Benningfield's request. So I'll open for discussion on that.
Bring what you requested, make it a program.
Yeah, well, sorry, my, my thought was that I would like to be able to have staff act quickly
if there is an abandoned RV, like in the center of our town, and not have to wait for, to come to council to tell us about it, to start all the process. So if we, and I, I don't know if others are gonna like this idea, but if we can come up with like a priority area in town, like maybe from Austin Street to Schoolhouse Street, then we could potentially just give staff the go-ahead and there is an abandoned RV there, they can take care of it. Or if you wanna deal, literally deal with that on a case-by-case basis, which I, my, my, my concern is that there would be, um, some time wasted. If it's case-by-case.
Um, I have a question, um, do you know how many abandoned RVs we have in human bases?
How many? The only one I know of one, it was happened shortly after.
That, that four, that you.
That you were addressing, besides the ones out here in the code enforcement, but that wasn't all on the road.
That was private property essentially.
And then, of course, we have all the stuff on Catch thirty-five cabinet, which is private property.
There were a few, right, where you pull up to the old scenic highway, I don't know if that's an area it is.
Right, your down drive areas, there was one?
I saw a wall. I'm walking down, so I don't even wanna drive it back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think that's our, within our area.
Yeah, we haven't managed our claim there since I've been here.
Yes, okay. Um, so I don't know, the options I've been thinking is that we could give some kind of direction to staff so that they would be able to deal with, um, ex, in, in an expedient manner, but, um, I know that the funding is also potentially could be used for like private property and other things, so we haven't really talked about it and I, uh, it would be a good discussion.
We only have like one, one, like, with the county, we're only gonna get either five or seven thousand dollars. It, if it's, it could be.
That was twenty.
Twenty, twenty thousand, e- each one can be seven thousand, and so that's just.
Those big ones, yeah.
So, we only really have three or four that we can do.
Two, I mean, it's, it was ten thousand per vehicle, was like, so we have two vehicles that we can, for the year, and that's our budget. I clarified it in the, the notes of the discussion, and what he said was that, um, we have the twenty thousand or the two, but let's say we identify two that needs to be, get done, and the quote comes in at twenty-two thousand to deal with, blah, blah, blah. He said, you'll still be able to get rid of the two, even if it goes over the twenty thousand. If that's what they ident, if that's what the council identifies and the county agrees need to be addressed, they'll pay for whatever needs to do, take care of it.
To get a bit along with two.
Yes.
Gotcha. So I guess, for me, the real question is, are we gonna prioritize a certain area of town and just allow staff to deal with it? Or would we rather deal with it on a case-by-case basis with the council?
I think case-by-case, because, I mean, all areas are important, what have you, but I shouldn't want one in my neighborhood. You know, so, if we just had it on one-on-one, well, that might be, that might limit us. But there's still a process, right?
Right.
Um, and I would say public property, not private.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think that we should be focused on public property.
But, um, and that, but it's like we're finding out, you have to figure out if there's somebody has a title, you try to contact the owner, so it's not gonna be fast anyway.
No.
So I think we have time to come back to the council.
That's a good point, excited.
Yeah, right, and then. Then I learned today that our, um, ordinance conflicts with what the county's doing. For example, he's been trying to address the Sunset Avenue issues. And before he realized it, he'd been ticking them for twenty-four hours, which is what their code is, but ours says seventy-two. So I would be bringing back to talk to you guys about whether or not you wanna change it to match the county, which I figured you would. So right now, for example, that guy's been playing musical vehicles.
Yes.
Um, so he parked one on Kent today, but, um, he can't address them. Uh, our deputy can't address it because of the twenty-four hours. So he's gotta watch it, wait until it's seventy-two hours, then he can address it. Uh, there's that Alcamina that was placed up on, he'd been looking for that this morning, but he found it today, I texted him and I said, look where it's at, so, uh, anyway, so, again, uh, I said, well, that's public property, and I asked him to look to see if we can pull that faster. Another thing I learned today that I'm gonna talk tomorrow, turning about and see how other cities are doing it, but one of the vehicles he tagged the twenty-four hours, somebody removed it. And the owner says he didn't do it, so our deputy confirmed with the powers that be over there that if they remove the sticker, they remove the notice.
Oh, the sticker.
It's considered in, it's considered intended to use, so that stops the clock. The sheriff can no longer do anything about it.
Oh.
Yes, I was very disappointed to hear that. So, um, I'm going to talk to our other cities and find out how they're addressing situations like that, and talk to our city council, and he's gonna talk to his sheriff and sign out if there's any way we can address that.
I have one question, so why is this guy playing musical cars if they work and he can drive on, what's the issue? He doesn't have a permanent place to park his cars or?
Yes, he does not have, he's a tenant, so there's, he doesn't have space up there for five people, and obviously, I'm guessing he doesn't wanna pay storage fees to store them somewhere else. So he's been, in case he's been working with them or staying on top of it, but the gentleman started parking in other people's properties, um.
One person has multiple cars, but doesn't have a proper place to park.
Yeah.
Yes.
He was living.
He's got five, I think?
He had five junk cars where he's living, and now he's staying over this, with, with this person on, uh, F one-two-five Sunset, and he's just bringing his car there and dumping them outside.
Yeah, and how he's getting the broken-down Alcamino, I don't know.
I think they should solve them or something.
But right now, he's playing.
So why do we do it, um, council that we're gonna just do it on a case-by-case, because it's.
It's like.
Yeah. And what do you mean, case-by-case, do you mean you want us to come to you for permission to address before we actually start the ball rolling?
I would think, go ahead with it.
Go ahead with it. And then come and tech report it to you like we do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Okay, um, P and D Engineering, check dam study, you're up, Mr. O'Brien.
I am.
Weathering the whole, the whole thing here. Thank you for being here this evening.
Are you waiting for us? I'm just, just gonna check this here. It's interesting, so.
So, uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm, during our last, uh, how restoration steering committee, being, um, we voted to go ahead with, uh, recommend that the city council go ahead with the P and D engineering to do this mitigation study with the National Marine Fish Service, as requested that we do, as a mitigation for the footage, square footage over, over print um, in the harbor. There's more square footage on the docks, the new docks than was on, on previous dock. I can't tell you exactly how many, uh, because my computer dumped all my history files out of the steering committee, but that's an issue, but I think some are in the city's records, so we'll find that. Anyway, um, that's, that's why we need to do it, and, uh, P and D has the people, uh, in their agency, in their agency, agency, in their business, or have, uh, people with whom they can contract to do this, so. Um, we, and both the city and the core, uh, element, that the check dam not be removed. Um, one of the, the issues on the check dam is that if we, if it were to be removed, some people may create a backup order service, let's say. The check dam is removed, the salt water, if you want the outlet for that, is at the, right up by the gazebo, near the creek, near the gazebo, when that little dock goes over, underneath there is, is the input, or the alcohol for it. And if you contaminate that with salt water, then, uh, Brady and his folks would have a fit, because it's probably screw up the water treatment business. Uh, and aside from that, I did any other to that, so that's, that's one reason. The other, the other thing is you love, love logging the way up, upstream, and any silt that flows into the creek is gonna go downstream. And, uh, it's, so, so for that reason, you know, we don't wanna remove it, but the idea of doing a study, you know, if we don't wanna remove it, then why, you're not gonna remove it, why do a study and see if it has to be removed or not? P and D feels that by doing this study, as in, as the National Marine Fish Service is, is requesting, uh, this would preclude us from having to do anything like that again in the future, should somebody else bring up the same issue. So let's get rid of check dam, also so that the, the fish can might read. And, uh, as we heard earlier with the salmon enhancement, any, um, presentation, Vini says that there's no, they don't use that, there's only one time that I know, where we took, uh, the fish from North Depot Bay Creek, uh, from reservoir, and put them in the, uh, in South Depot Bay Creek, because they've had to do something up there. So, um, the engineering has, uh, given the city proposal to do the study at a cost of thirty thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars for four of the five tasks. And, uh, again, the recommendation the steering committee gives, that city council approve, uh, thirty thousand, three seventy-nine, or three eighty, or whatever you wanna mob it up to, to contract with, uh, P and D Engineering to do this study. And we have, the, the, the study will, the study is not yet to be completed before the project is completed. It's, uh, continuing to plan, so we have probably three years, maybe even five, one, wish it, depending upon availability of the, of people to do the study. So we have at least three years to, to complete it, but we really wanna get that out of the way, and that's, you know, get it started. And, and one of the things P and D can do is when they're here, during the. And, and one of the things PND can do is when they're here, during the construction, they can do some of the studying items that are required. They can complete some of the tasks during that time and cut back on the cost. PND has been working with the city to try to keep the cost down. And, uh, because they know we don't have any money, so. Uh, anyhow, that's, that's it. Make a long story shorter, even shorter, that, that's, that's, that's.
Questions for Jack?
Do you have any questions or?
Are we talking about like an next year's budget?
If the city gets into the budget, or you could even, because we have a couple of years to do it, if, if, I don't know if this is possible, but you can do fifteen and fifteen. But I think that, I don't know, either that's something the city would have to work out with PND, whether they would accept that sort of thing. And that budgeting stuff is.
It's totally up to them now, so. I mean, there's, we, we can do it. There's money in professional services right now.
Oh, like in this year's budget?
Yes. Now, they're not gonna get it done this year.
Yeah, but we could, we.
Yeah.
I got you.
We could what?
I would give them money for that.
Well, I think, um, Council of Danny Field is saying we could approve it, which we can, but the money won't be expended until it comes out next year because they won't get the study done by the end of June.
So we have to put it in, it's coming, what?
I would just add it to it. And you know, it would just be a line item because we already have money in professional services. So you know how I'm doing the balloon, which shows the individual? I would just add this study.
I, I think it has to be done.
Yeah. We have no, no doubt we have to do it. If somebody wants to, go ahead and motion and do the whole thing too.
A question, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Did I hear Jack correctly, Mayor, say it would take three to five years to do this study?
No, no, no. What I said was that we have from three, uh, first time, what I heard was three years to complete the study. In other words, we don't have to get it done by the end of June twenty twenty-three.
Or before the docks.
So we have, yeah, or before the docks completed. We have a, a timeframe within which we may must complete that, uh, uh, study.
My concern, my concern, uh, again, uh, is, do we run up against a deadline for completing this project?
No.
No, no.
This has nothing to do with the completion of replacement of the docks.
I understand that, but it has, has to be done though in order to build and do the.
Uh, council are basically not to build. It doesn't, there's, it's not, they're not getting the study done right away, is not gonna delay us going out to bid or building once we have the money. They're doing it in congruence.
Concert.
Concert. Yeah.
Because of the overage of the docks.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, it, it, basically, it is a way that we can mitigate the excess, uh, overwater coverage that we need for the new docks.
And they will sign.
I understand.
If we do this study.
Yeah.
That, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So is there a motion to accept the bid from PND Engineering for thirty thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars? Uh, can we add for task one through four?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, for task one through four.
Yeah.
Additional task five that's in your background material.
I'll leave that motion and keep asking.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, go forward with the services to, um, mitigate the footprint increase. See, any further discussion on the motion? All righty. That's just the time we move to accept it.
Okay.
And I will bring back to a later date, he was unable to get the actual agreement done. So once that's to me and ready to go, I will bring it back to you for later date approval. We just wanted to get movement on getting this over, but we'll give it a vote.
Now, this was a, a rough draft. Hopefully the cost, the cost will not increase.
Has to go again. Any other discussion? All in favor of seeing I?
Hi.
Any opposed? All righty, thank you. All righty. Here we go, almost to the end, guys. Um, city planner updates, any question? Um, like, uh, Kit, put before us.
And Kit is online if you have any questions for him.
And you could also say that this makes things sound like that people are doing this. Really.
Which one?
Oh, how they're illegally renting out their home on Spring Avenue.
I, um, I don't know if y'all know about this, but here's the company that came to our, our house, saying, rent your house.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. They'll get them, they'll help us all. Yeah. Could we have that to watch for them?
I'm sorry?
Can we have that to watch for them at least the name of it so we can check and watch them?
That's why I brought it in.
We were just, we just learned one, I think. Kit couldn't remember that, I thought we just learned one.
Yeah. This is called Meridian, I believe.
They should always do their homework and check their results before they start.
I agree with you. Oh, Meredith, I'm sorry.
Oh, Meredith. Oh, they're all here. Yeah. I think it's all around.
Yeah, I, I, I get those in the mail all the time.
Yeah. Um, okay, so any, no, no questions for Kit about his, uh, findings? Yeah, yeah, no question, but related to that, we all get them in our mailbox, right? I think we need to be proactive on our website and say, check your zoning. Because I know Kit, um, gets questions all the time. The most common question is, can I rent my house? Well, we should say, check your planning, you know, uh, vacation rentals are only allowed in certain zones. Just some notice on our website because it, it's just, well, people are going around it, of course, but some legitimately don't know because they're being solicited.
I found a very good site that has all that information the city did. So after budget, my friend just steal it to create a page with all that. It's, it's like beautiful.
It's beautiful. All righty. Well, I, I'd like to thank Kit for really following up on all these complaints and, um, I really. So I, I have a question for Kit since he's home, he's home this long, if he's still there. Um, how do you want us, what's the process you want us to follow to provide you information when we see things out in the community?
Uh, start with me, start with.
Start with, okay.
Uh, because Kit's only working part-time, you know, so, um, some of these things may be,
side page.
Me and Brady will address, some of these things will be, and I do wanna change the, um, how code enforcement officer, because right now it's just listed as Brady. But I think we should, I, I think me and Kit should be able to do it as well. Rather than jumping everything on Brady who has a lot to do, so. So right now, and then we'll funnel it.
Okay.
Uh, that's what we'll do. We're gonna start tracking it through a spreadsheet. So if the council at any point wants to kinda see what we're doing, we're doing that. And I did wanna let you know that we are watching those A-frames signs. Um, I have noticed that fish numbers is clear nose up, taking theirs down, putting theirs up, taking theirs down. Um, we sent out the gentle letter and Kit's also watching it. We're gonna kinda see what signs weren't up today, but they were up every weekend. So we're gonna be, if they continue to put them up, we're gonna send a hard line letter and they'll get it.
No, it's not only fish numbers.
No, but they're the one, right, but they're the ones that are just, the other one, Kit, who was the thing you communicated with?
I see, yeah, it's Kit there. Um, yeah, I spoke with, um, the folks that own dockside and the candy store last week. So they're, they're aware of our concerns and they're working with us.
Right, so he's going to look at addressing the others he went down when he was upstate to see who's there. Brady, uh, yeah, so anyway, we're gonna follow up with those afterwards.
Have we heard back from, and then after we sent out that certified letter about the illegal rental?
Kit, did you hear that from Council Watson?
Yes, I, I did. Um, response yet. Um, so I'm gonna be checking our, the Granite's website to see if there's any change or whether it's still listed or not. But we haven't received a formal response yet.
Okay.
That's the President, Preston Street. I believe.
This sounds like Spring.
Oh, Spring.
Yeah.
Okay, um, project updates, has everybody seen, uh, right through what we've got going on in the city? We are busy, busy, busy. Brady, do you wanna?
Yeah, now, some of our, we were cleaning the grass out of the gutters, cleaning up the town.
Pay your attention to this beautiful drawing at Mark.
Mark. So the bank is right here in Hardy Street next to the bank. Um, there's an area here, it's, uh, Pirate's Cove in those outbuildings there. There's a coffee shop there years ago. It's right in, in, in the sidewalk right there, we have an eight-inch water main that feeds all over Mark. And back in the day, our predecessors, we have one valve right here to isolate this. Another valve is cleared out past World, Worldmark all the way by the depot A side, the whale, the boat side. So it would cause all this to be shut down. So we have to communicate with Worldmark, let them know that they will have no water while we repair this. And it's, uh, asbestos concrete, so it has a possibility of breaking, shattering, we have to replace it. So maybe we have to replace a section. We have to repair parts. But I'm gonna get a, a contractor involved with the city crew and, uh, really plan this and then communicate with them. Because it is, um, Memorial Day weekend, they aren't full.
Now, Brady and I are going, we were gonna do it today, but we didn't get a chance. So we're gonna put together some communication to send out to all of the people that would be affected by this. Post on our website saying that this is what's happened. We're gonna try to hold off until after Memorial Day because of the holiday weekend. But we wanna let them know that if there is a break, where if it, it deteriorates rapidly, we're gonna pull the trigger sooner. Where this, their, their, his crew plans to monitor it until.
Yeah.
Is there any way of putting in a temporary line to, a boathouse?
No, it's a main feeder.
It's a main.
It's a main, it's a, it's an eight-inch main feed line that you can't really go around or bypass it or anything. You have to shut down a main to do something like that anyway. So we have to shut it down, either put a repair on there or replace that section.
And given the location between the two valves, if they put it sooner in another location, they would have only had to isolate a small piece. But the way that they put those valves in now is huge.
Yeah, they made it difficult.
Yeah.
So you got contractors on to help?
Yeah, Dan Price is gonna help us and then, uh, uh, I've got Grant too, we need to dump truck. We're trying to put a bit of valve pipe. The recent, you know, the leak's been going on for a while. It's been progressively getting worse and now it's up to over a hundred gallons of methane. It's quite, quite an impact. Um, is, is it's going, it's not coming to the surface, it's, it's going into a culvert in two Pirates Cove. So the way we found it was while cleaning, well, Mark was able to hear it. He heard it rushing, rushing water and he was just scraping the weeds in the gutter and cleaning for our, they clean up, you know, it's, it's great out there. That was a big plot, so.
Because they've been done, Abe looks like it. They just were not nearby reporting.
Yeah.
It's a fact.
But then you're not able to find.
We had a reward, keep a side reward.
I'm, I'm still gonna.
Okay, then, then, then. How long, how long do you think it'll take to repair that?
Two days, you told me.
Up to two, it could, it just depends. I mean, it may take two hours to, two days, you just don't know.
What kind of accommodation could the city do with Worldmark during?
Uh, we just let them know that their water will be down. We could try to isolate it as best we can and shut their meters off. So it, what they have, they get, if they just don't use water and they don't have gas and they tell gas, don't use water please for a few hours or.
Right.
I don't know what they're gonna do.
So you have to slip it, slip line it?
No, you have to shut it down and put it, that's more sewer, um, where it's open and void. But unpressurized water is, is, you know, you literally have to
shut it.
Shut it down, replace it, or we have these repair plants that can go slide over it and then clamp down for the crack, if it's cracked. If it's had, it's just, we don't know where it is. If we do any research to find it, we could, uh, literally it could blow out the ground.
So if you're gonna lose pressure, you're gonna have to do a blow on water?
No, uh-uh, no, we're, we're gonna try to fix it, no, we, we may. If, 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 everything depends on the repair. We're hoping to shut the valves down or water still pours out and we just slide the repair over the line and clamp it down. That's it. If we have to saw the line, then we, it depends on the, how far the section is from the valves. So we may have to do a blow on it, but maybe not, maybe just in that area.
Is this something that, um, our city engineer can look at you with on Thursday?
Uh, possibly, yeah.
Because he, our, I don't want you to know that our city engineer's gonna be here on Thursday.
It's just the knowledge of where the valves are and the repair crew.
He might be, can you pass him? How, how deep is it?
Um, probably about, it's hard to say, again, it's probably, right, or most of our lines are about four feet deep. But where the rock is, you know, town by, say, where the whale fountain and that, it's, it's just under the asphalt. Cause it's solid rock through there. But in that area, there's, there's material, so it's, it's not forty.
Can I come watch?
Are there other lines running through there that might affect?
Uh, no, there's a water line that, that's making, gas seams on the other side of the highway.
The sewers.
The sewer's in the road, uh, a bit, but it, it's, we're all by the phone.
So is you planning to like schedule it right after Memorial Day unless there's some kind of emergency?
Yeah, unless there's, we're, we're, we're staging all the repairs and the valves to shut off now. But, um, hopefully, yeah, maybe right after Memorial Day. I hope we're, some of the guys wanna do it right after the event, like Monday morning between second, but.
We need to be able to, you have to give people more notice.
Yeah, we need to let Worldmark know.
Because they are gonna have to let people who wanna rent the place, so this is the holiday weekend. So if we can, I think we should hold off.
Yeah.
Um, but, but then caveat that if things get really bad, we'll, we'll let them know, but you'll have to pull the trigger as fast as possible.
It'd be interesting.
Well, I mean.
It'd be scary.
Well, I mean, we're going into, you know, below water time. So a hundred, you know, gallons a minute is.
Yes.
A lot, a lot of, yeah. Any other questions about the, um, projects?
I do have one quick update, um, I don't think I put it in here. The audit, okay. So I finally, every time I threaten him, or not really threaten him, but tell him if I don't hear from him, we're gonna, I need to know if I need to go find somebody else and I gotta call from him, but I don't hear from him for weeks. So I did talk to him yesterday and, uh, he said that one of his guys, the main guy, called us on vac, been on vacation. Uh, and then, uh, I sort of had a, an emergency. So he, they were supposed to be here the first week of then. So now he's telling me the first week and two, based on your schedule. Um, he, I asked him about the nineteen twenty report because we were told everything was ready, that all was good, now he's telling me it's not. Now he's telling me they have to come back, that's what they're coming back for on June because they have one thing they have to look at, but he doesn't think it would take long and then they'll be able to knock out the report. So, um.
Does he say what it is?
No, he did not tell me what it is. He said it's the difference between a disclaimer and a finding.
Okay.
And we do not want a finding, so. Um, and at that time, we'll talk about the twenty twenty-one. And this would be, if he doesn't show up again, this will be the third time you've tried to arrange this with them. And frankly, I'm getting real frustrated because we're, we're not being considered. So one of the things I, if I hadn't heard from him, I was definitely gonna ask you tonight about talking about going out and finding another operator. Um, now, yeah, the Government Finance Officers Association is meeting up in Portland coming up soon. And the county administrator, who has I serve and having the same problems, is going to look for auditors. So, um, he invited, he did COVID, but I'm like, no, I can't get away, I don't wanna get away. But he will provide us information, he finds it, but there's other down there. I know it's hard, but, uh, this is beyond ridiculous. We're trying.
How about we already paid them the financial money?
We paid them to do nineteen twenty.
So they at least helped me finish that report.
Yes, but I'm sure he's gonna charge us more for what he's doing. I don't think he finalized that and I think it ended up probably be more. I do not have signed contract for twenty twenty-one. I told him I don't have a signed contract for twenty twenty-one. Because when, uh, the previous city recorder did it, she only had the first year. Even though the RFP was for three years, the contract that they signed was.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
What about Cook Street?
Oh, Cook Street was in here.
Was it?
Um, yeah, yeah.
I forwarded that information onto the, um.
Service manager.
To take the next steps, yeah.
Okay.
Be, because case, uh, the, the code enforcement officer for, um, Mink County and our deputy went to try it on her. And they both, I talked to, um, Deputy Woodman at the emergency. And they both, I talked to, um, Deputy Wooten at the emergency scene, and he's like, nope.
He's, he's, they're not gonna.
They're not gonna, she's not.
Uh, what, they were gonna?
So go, go next step.
Okay.
They said she's just not going to.
So the next step is a fine, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So like a daily fine?
Mm-hmm.
And then that would be attached like a lien on the property?
Yes, yes.
So I'm sure it's out, you know?
For million dollar property.
Yes. Let them know it. Um, I do have one more final thing, the urban renewal, I, the reason that I made that idea is because every time I turn over a rock, I find stuff, so the rock I overturned was due in our revenue budget. Um, and I found out that it appears that a lot of the transfers in previous years were not done, meaning that money moving in and out just didn't happen. Um, and yet the budgets, when I did it, reflected that they did, so, um, I, you're gonna have more money. The urban renewal budget I did, I, I gave you guys the new budget, right? The paper I gave you tonight, the one with the red color, I don't have a paper. I had to put it in everybody's desk, did you know?
No.
Seriously?
Seriously.
Have you ever had a cat thing? How do you have it, you're the angel? Oh, you know what, I know why, my fault.
Yeah, my gosh.
Wait, is it like, and it's just the urban renewal, or is like this whole thing?
I didn't take the box.
Okay, so I was just running through the printer, and I thought I gave it to you all. So I've been working on this, uh, because I haven't given the urban renewal budget as much love. And Council Beasley, I will send you a copy via email. Um, so it's very, pretty much the same plus, I also included the cover letter that I wrote, because one of the castings, Council Rec Pass, which was the differences in those two funds, so I understand how all this works now. But when I started working on it, I learned about the transfers not happening, the budgeted expenses and the things that weren't recorded, and the fact that the last urban renewal budget didn't balance, um, yeah. So it does now, for twenty-three, twenty-four, it does now.
Okay.
Um, but when we talked tomorrow night, I wanted to discuss some of those lines on there, so I wanted to give you this ahead of time, so you have it. It, it changes numbers a little bit, but it shifts a few things, it's the actuals that, that are different. And then tomorrow night, I'll tell you more about it, but I wanted to give you that ahead.
And Kim and I sat through the entire urban renewal, um, LLC training.
I will, and Council, so were you predicting, weren't you, Council's home?
No.
Who else was there?
I was there.
You were a good portion of it.
It wasn't particularly useful for us.
I, I listened to the whole thing and I have some questions, but it was.
Okay, uh, pardon me before I said, L.A.'s, does anybody want these?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, okay, so I think they want, how about, you want this stuff displayed here at City Hall?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Absolutely.
Should I just need one copy of that, so that we should?
Yeah, I'll take care of it, just getting it displayed and posted.
Great, perfect.
Thank you so much, nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, thank you so much.
All righty. Are we, okay, moving on. Um, Council Hamish, do you wanna start the meeting?
Uh, no.
Council Beasley?
Thank you, Mayor Short, um, I appreciate it very much, being able to speak. Yeah, I very much appreciated the information that the county helped, uh, people, but I actually have to object to these lengthy presentations. I think that the council, uh, shouldn't be required to sit through, uh, anything that, you know, goes into the twenty or thirty-minute length. To me, it's, it's not really directly related to the business of the city government or the city council, and we have so many things that we have to do and be alert to, and I don't want to discourage anybody from bringing information in, but I do believe there should be time limits. Uh, I think, you know, uh, we require our citizens to speak within a five-minute time length, and I think that that could be, uh, the case for, uh, other speakers. Certainly, they can present their information and it can be included in the packet, and by the way, I did not see this on the agenda that I have, uh, or any of that information in the packet.
We had to see that revised agenda.
The revised agenda wasn't adding that, the revised agenda, that came out first. The information didn't come until today, so it did not get provided, it was provided today. But the agenda.
Well, it would have been on there.
I think it would be helpful, uh, if we had, if we had that in, so that we can look at it as we need to. But I, I would ask Mayor that you, uh, and also, uh, uh, Madam Recorder, that you, uh, consider a time limit on these presentations so that we can move forward with the really important business of our city. Uh, I, I would also like to say that, uh, on the, uh, presentation of the history of Native Americans, I have that book, um, The People Are Singing Again, I believe that's the name of it. I, I have a real interest in Native American history, and I found that this narrative was almost ridiculously innocent in describing the, this beatific lifestyle of Native Americans, and I don't wanna argue with that or, or the point, but uh, just to say that, uh, uh, you know, it, it's, it's not very factual in my viewpoint, and if we ever need to debate the point later, we could. Finally, I, I, uh, I'm concerned about this piecemeal approach to vacation rental, um, enforcement. At some point, we're gonna have to sit down and look at this whole issue of vacation rentals and, uh, because we know that many more are operating in our city, and we just need to have a discussion about this. Uh, those, those are my concerns, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Beasley.
I just wanted to make sure so that I am ready for tomorrow, these are the documents.
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
I don't think I have this for you.
You are at the budget meeting.
Oh, my, I, I got your, okay, thank you.
I can get to them.
Did you say you want to?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna ask if it would be possible to get a calendar of meetings because I've been getting very confused and today very frustrated, I was here at five.
Oh, shoot.
I raised here from work to get here at five, I was sure, and it's the same thing, it was two weeks ago, and it wasn't, so.
Okay, so, yeah.
I think you could get it mailed to us at the beginning of the month, or something I could physically look at would really help me because it's hard for me to go through all my emails and.
Yeah, I agree.
Figure it out, and then I didn't realize that we had agreed to have meetings on Wednesdays. I can make it tomorrow, but I can't always make Wednesday meetings, you know, I didn't know that was a thing. That was it?
Um, just wanted to bring up, um, the need to replace speed bumps on Williams, they're totally ineffective, and the worst offenders are the locals who knows they are not, um, meaningful. So I think we need to think about replacing speed bumps in the painting that leads up to. What's that?
That street's a mess.
It's a mess, yeah. And everybody knows that there's law enforcement now on one-on-one, so they're going even faster on Williams.
I'll send them over to Williams.
Wait, do you want?
Joyce, did you have any?
Yeah, I, I want everybody to make sure to get your T-shirt. Please do, we've got all sizes, and, um, Tiffany, nicely put them in boxes and separate it and see.
Nice.
Find your size, and I wanna thank everyone for all the help with the fiftieth. Um, everybody contributed a lot and it's very much appreciated, and I think it will be successful, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh, you're the one that's been a vital life, yes, through all of this, so. And I just have a, a comment that, uh, we have a new Hark's commissioner on, and he hasn't even been to a meeting, Hark's meeting. So he's out leading all of the front of our city. Uh, his name is Ken Lauer, and he doesn't even live here, he would, you know, he came on two weeks ago, and he went, he just wants something to do, so he's out. He's not taking care of all of our things, and thank you to Steph, really Brady, for all of cleaning up downtown, it looks so much better.
It does, it looks great.
It's really nice.
I'm trying to get, now that the meats are done, we're gonna put vinegar and salt with fish oil, saturate the gutters.
And perfect. We're done, thank you, we'll see you on Saturday.
Thank you.
Okay.